Duper.
Present.
Councilman Popescu.
May I present?
Close report from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council has been in closed session. Anticipate in the agenda item. There's no action to report at this time.
Okay, then we will proceed to our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Popescu. Please stand.
Bless Bowerhead. Thank you so much, the dearly Father, for giving us the opportunity to serve in this amazing country and wonderful state. We ask that you bless Loma Linda and all of its residents and help us have a wonderful and productive meeting. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice as one.
I think I'm going to get a yes. On both, are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir. I would like to delete item four A.
And? Oh, okay. Okay. We have to add something. It's pretty rare. So you said four A. Okay, are there any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Looks like we have one request from Dick Wiley.
Thank you to the council and staff that's here and pass it on. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Like to thank Jarb Conrad, City Council. We finally got irrigation in over at the adobe. And glad to see it. Unfortunately, we now got all the rain, so it helps. But hopefully we can get the same thing done at the north end of Heritage Park and save those trees. They look a little wilted a couple of weeks ago, but anyway, thank you for that and what they did have done to shore up and block the adobe and that kind of thing. So it's been a long time coming. Thanks to everybody and Merry Christmas.
Yeah, and city staff did ourself, so.
Cheaper than consultants. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, we move forward to item H. We have our consent calendar minus four A.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Yeah, there's a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. Item eight. Presentation regarding the SoCal Gas Climate Adaptation and Resiliency Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Jeffrey Danker. I'm a environmental policy manager at Southern California Gas Company. I'm here to congratulate the city of Loma Linda for winning $50,000 from our SoCal Gas Climate Adaptation and Resiliency Grant Program. This is a shareholder-funded initiative that we created to support local governments in planning for and recovering from climate change risk. The impetus of this was the passing of Senate Bill 379, which was an unfunded mandate from the state that required all cities to incorporate climate adaptation risk into their safety element and ultimately into their local hazard mitigation planning process. And so as a recovering planner myself, I always notice there's often a disconnect between emergency services, planning departments, and utilities who are often located outside the city, such as SoCal Gas. So part of my goal was to bridge that gap. And it was a very competitive process. We had over, all our jurisdictions were eligible, which is 220 cities and counties. We had over 20 applications. I wanted to give a hand to Shannon Kendall for developing a wonderful application that get rave reviews from our partners. This wasn't just SoCal Gas. We partnered with three nonprofits: Climate Resolve, the American Planning Association, and the Los Angeles Regional Collaborative on Climate Change and Sustainability. So everyone had very high marks for Loma Linda. We're thrilled to support you guys and the utility looks forward to partnering as you guys update your hazard mitigation plan, your safety element, and roll everything into your general plan. So congrats again. Can we do a photo? Or is there any questions or anything about the process?
Of the 20 applicants, how many, how many got?
Total winners? We have three winners.
Three winners.
And so.
So three out of 20.
Yeah, and it was more than 20. It was like 24 or something like that. And our service territory goes Mexico to Fresno and everywhere in between. So we're a massive utility and so it was, it was a competitive process. And so hats off to Shannon and his team for helping.
Very good.
Can I get you to be the photographer then?
Absolutely.
Oh, which way you want us? Go this way?
With or without the politicians?
You guys want to get in there?
Okay, we'll hide behind, under the dais.
I'm behind the chair, Mr. Mayor. You guys perfect, right there. All right, at three. One, two, three. I'll do one more just in case. One, two, three. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Congrats, man.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, and I will officially submit the check to Diana.
The question I had was, I was looking in the staff report regarding the ability to use the funds. Is it limited to specific uses or?
It's, it's, it's what specifically Shannon put in his six-page proposal.
Yeah, so basically, we had put in for a hazard mitigation grant to help update the two plans that were mentioned. As a result of that, there's a 25% match to the federal grant. So this money will be used to offset that cost. In addition to that, in updating the safety element of the general plan, there's a SEQA component that is not covered by the grant, so it'll also cover that cost. And then in addition to that, the actual contract, the consultant that came in, it's going to ultimately get the bid, came in a little higher than what I had originally put in for, for grant funding for the hazard mitigation grant. So it'll help offset that cost too. So we're looking at it being kind of a net, I mean, there will be a zero, I don't know the financial term, but it's not going to cost the city anything. This grant will help offset any costs that the city would have to incur.
So is, would it be part of the general plan to update?
Well.
Or separate?
It's just one component.
Majority is for hazardous mitigation.
Yeah, hazardous mitigation.
So it's, so the amount is, could be used to update the plan, not to actually get involved in actually trying to remove hazardous material or anything like that?
No, it's, it's for updating the plan. What, what the state wants is they want to see that when you update your hazard mitigation plan, that it's tied directly into the city's general plan, safety element. Because then your, you know, hazard mitigation is looked at, you know, anytime the city does any type of development or anything like that, hazard mitigation is looked at that, at, kind of in the forefront. So it's part of that overarching plan. So they want to see, they're starting to, wanting to see hazard mitigations updated at the same time as general plan safety elements, so that they're in agreement. In fact, when we go to, ultimately when we present to city council for adopting the updated plans, there will be language in both resolutions showing that the hazard mitigation plan is adopted as a component of the general plan safety element and then vice versa. So it'll be in agreement. And then that actually, that actually leads to funding later on down the road if we were to have a disaster. Instead of being able to go after just 75% recovery, you know, for CDAA, California Disaster Sack, we could actually go for up to 100% recovery. If we have those two things in place and in an agreement with one another. So that's kind of the purpose of this. That's how I wrote the grant, is that it would be, you know, the updated plan would be in alignment with the general plan safety element. So they're being updated at the same time.
Thank you.
Did you, did, did I understand you to say there were, based on the SoCal Gas region, there were 200 cities that were eligible and 20 applied? 24, okay. And so the observation I want to make is that we may be a small city, but we've got an aggressive staff that is on top of this stuff. And that is noteworthy. I've dealt with a faculty where we were trying to get them to pursue grants for some of their hopes and wishes. And so congratulations to our safety department.
Yes, and for our local MASH, instead of using general fund money to, for local MASH, to use the labor costs.
That's a big deal.
And competing with jurisdictions that have staffs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who work on grant, I know the team at LA County who worked on theirs and, you know, they got 20 people looking at their grant, you know, and pretty much did it.
So that's noteworthy.
What I can see is.
Hats off. Congratulations. A job well done.
And to be fair, I mean, that grant application was actually submitted to the planning develop, uh, planning department and I think it was Lorraine that forwarded it to me. And I got it and I saw the language. I was like, oh, man, this is like perfect timing. I gotta, you know, strike while the iron is hot and try to get the, you know, try to get the grant, so.
But you still had to take the initiative and the time to do it, so good job. Good job.
Right, thank you.
The only negative is we'll lose a great employee to a grant-writing firm.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine. 2020 meeting schedule.
The city reserves the second and fourth Tuesdays as regular city council meeting nights. We do maintain an effort to agendize items for that second Tuesday, reserving that fourth Tuesday should business necessitate. And this is really just information as to the regular meeting nights for 2020.
And they look all to be actual second Tuesdays.
Second, second Tuesday of each month.
There is no exception.
We reserve the fourth Tuesday should, should business necessitate, but we try to schedule for the one meeting a month.
Do we need to adopt this or just informational?
Informational. Okay, are there any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? Okay, then the city council is adjourned and we'll go to our successor agency where we do have items to add or delete.
Yes, sir. I would like Diana to present this item and the reason why we have to add, so.
Well, the procedure, just to remind you, is that in order to add an item to an agenda, after the posting of the agenda, we need to make two findings. And the findings are that there's a need for immediate action. And the second finding is that that need came to the attention of the agency after the posting of the current agenda. So I think the city clerk can address the need for the immediate action and when she became aware of that. And then the motion would be to add the item based upon those two findings as I've indicated.
Excuse me, I was not aware until yesterday that the Oversight Board with the county, not meeting until, they're meeting on January 13. We don't have another meeting until January 14. And it is necessary that the city council approve the resolutions adopting both the admin budget and the ROPS prior to going to the Oversight Board. And it was just brought to my attention yesterday. And the agenda went out last Thursday.
Okay, so the first order of business is to adopt the findings, the two findings.
Yes, the motion would be to add the item based upon the finding that there's a need for immediate action, which came to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda as indicated by the city clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion to second. Further discussion, hearing none. Opposition, hearing none. That's approved. Now it's the motion to actually approve the ROPS.
Correct.
But she's going to give us some information first.
Mayor, council members, this is the 2020-21 ROPS that we will be submitting to the countywide Oversight Board. This will be the second ROPS we submit to the county Oversight Board after their formation. Part of the urgency is that DOF also came out with a new format, so the template was barely released last week to us. And so in order to have it populated and submitted to the Oversight Board, we were barely able to do it this week to get all the information. So we have submitted it, the information into the new template, which actually formats the new reporting module. It looks similar to what we have done in Excel before, but now you actually do the data entry and then it spits out an actual end result report for you. So as far as the expenditures submitted, ours are pretty straightforward. We have professional services, which are mainly for continuing disclosure items related to the debt, the bonded debt we have. We have maintenance for the special area D property that we still hold as the successor agency. So we do annual weed abatement and then we are submitting a larger amount of $150,000 for the grinding of the trees. We're not sure if it'll be approved, but we're going to submit for it. We also have property appraisal that we submit because we're never sure when we will be actually in a sales transaction that will need to do the appraisal for the property. The rest is pretty straightforward. We have the city loans that are being repaid, so we submit those two semi-annual payments for that. The bonded debt, we submit for that. And then we have legal and we have our administrative budget, which covers our city staff, our attorneys, and our consultant, Diane Hadler, that helps us with the reporting that we do to the state. So we, we are submitting a total of $6.2 million for the ROPS, this, for which will be for the 2020, the 2020-21 fiscal year. If you have any questions.
And the Oversight Board is the county.
The county, correct.
Okay, so there's no questions and is there a motion to approve the ROPS?
They're actually the two separate resolutions that you'd want to incorporate in your motion as identified.
Okay, as recommended. Council Bill R dash 2019 dash 45 and dash 46. And that's for city council and successor agency, so I'm reopening the city council for purposes of that.
I'm supportive of it. I'm just trying to figure out what the motion needs to be at this point.
The motion is to adopt two, two council bills.
They're approving the successor agency administrative budget and approving the recognized obligation payment schedule for July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
And we need to do those separately?
You can do those together. They're.
Okay, I move them both as described by city attorney.
I'll take that as a second because you incorporated it as a first.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Please make the motion.
And then you got the second.
Yeah, got it. That's fine.
Yeah.
That works.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. That's approved unanimously. So now we have the consent calendar for the successor agency. There's a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. That's adjourned. Now the housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
I'm starting to like hearing yes. It's more exciting. The consent calendar?
Move it.
Okay, there's a motion to accept. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. And now, is there any public comment for the housing authority? Hearing none. Then are there any chair member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none. That's adjourned. I'm reopening the successor agency. Any public comment? Hearing none. Readjourn the successor agency.
I don't know where this.
I'm slipping.
I know where, I don't know where this would have fit, but at some point can we get an update on the area D development? I know there's a lot going on over there, but I've been asked by several people.
Sure. You can see the Lenar project, the single-family residential project is underway. They're, they finished their models and their construction of phase two and three and have released sales for, sorry, phase one and two, have received, released sales for phase three and are planning on pulling those permits for phase three here in the next week, with phase four moving fairly rapidly after that.
And they're, they're having, almost having people camp out.
It is a buyer.
It's high demand.
Now, what about the two developments across the street, across California?
Across California is the Sea Country project.
Right.
They have sold out. They're finishing their last couple of houses.
Oh.
And then farther to the east is the KB project.
Right.
They're not selling quite as, quite as quickly. Both of those projects with the rains.
Yeah.
They've had a little bit of flooding on California, but I think we've got that under control now. There was this plugged storm drain and some drainage ditches assist and the construction project got plugged. To the north of that Lenar project up against the Groves.
Right.
We are in the tail end of planning review for a, I believe it's 160-unit senior apartment by the same developer that's doing, did the apartments on Lagonia across from the DMV in Redlands. Very beautiful project. They've worked with us on that extensively. Directly behind the VA, there's the little parcel that Lewis owns for about 45 units of condo project. They're in initial review for that. And then tomorrow at 11:30, we have an informational meeting here in the council chambers for interested purchasers for our, the redevelopment-owned property that is on the market right now.
What about the shopping area and parks in area D?
That will be, the park is, the park, major park is in two pieces. One half is part of the Lenar, Lenar development.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, we've gone through the plan review and they should be under construction of that relatively soon. The, the second half mirrored on the west side is part of what will be sold as this package. And the, the commercial and mixed use is that area up against Redlands Boulevard, the majority of which is also redevelopment property, so should be this part of this package.
And the shopping area?
That's that commercial.
That's the commercial piece that's going up for.
Yeah, across, and then the Lewis owns a commercial piece directly across from the VA.
Yeah.
They, they've brought in several interested tenants, but nothing's ever really come together, so, and, but they are actively shopping that project around.
Okay, now here's, here's the basis behind the questions. I've had some people talk with me about traffic issues in, particularly in the morning, getting onto the freeway, et cetera, et cetera. How co, and, and people are worried. We've got all these developments surrounding California Avenue. Is the timing of widening California Avenue going to coincide with the development of these projects who are confident will have traffic control?
Yes, so.
California Street is being designed right now.
California is in design.
And storm drain.
And then also as, when the, when we complete the project, at some point in phasing throughout this, all of the major intersections, citrus, orange, and park will also be signalized as well and then coordinated with the, the signal and the widening that we did at the, at Redlands Boulevard. So it'll, basically California will be a four.
That's the concern.
California will be a four-lane street. And then the other piece is, is that the, the street design and all of that was specifically designed so there's internal circulation and then it pushes that, that there's no ability to move from Redlands Boulevard to Mission Road, to not create raceways inside that project and, and shift a lot of that traffic in the future development up through Bryn Mawr onto Redlands Boulevard rather than onto California.
Interesting.
But don't worry, the Redlands rail will mitigate all that traffic.
The, the, which is an SBCTA project, by the way.
It's an Omni-trans project.
No, it, no longer.
Nothing will be Omni-trans project when it's all over.
That's right. The, the. Now the mayor threw me off my, off my. Yeah.
What about the highway patrol station?
They have completed the EIR, but I do not know that they've gone beyond that as far as identifying any construction or planning on the construction.
Does it feel like it's got put on hold or is it still going?
They, they were very active up until about six months ago and we haven't heard anything since.
I appreciate my colleague, Councilman Duper, kind of bailing me out on this. The other question I had was, I, I still have concerns. And so I'm looking for somebody to alleviate those concerns about the school that's going in behind the VA and all of the additional traffic that's going to create. Are we fairly confident we've got that figured out now?
The initial design for the school had bus traffic coming in behind the VA building, not on Mission Road. And then parent pickup off of Mission Road, so the traffic would be segregated and not mixed to alleviate some of that. As far as we know, Redlands School District does not have any construction money now for new schools, so the land will sit fallow. And in the most recent discussions with them is, the typical middle school requires a larger footprint than what that site is now. So they, they may be looking at other sites in the future. It's, it's really a, for what a middle school requires today, it's, it's a substandard site.
Okay.
And yet they paid a few million dollars for that land.
When, when they acquired it, it was, it was suitable for that, but the requirements for a middle school as far as playgrounds and fields and size, apparent, and I'm not an expert on it, apparently have changed in that it requires a larger site than.
It would be ironic if they sold it back because it would be a second time that that property gets through the school and back to the city.
Thank you, Conrad.
So with the new hospital nearing completion and there's rumors of a proposed ambulatory facility tower going in next to the FMO, how's our traffic going to be impacted by all this?
I heard it's, it's proposed pediatric outpatient clinics.
Yeah, but it's a pediatric ambulatory tower, yeah. So basically the, all the offices, I understand it, all the offices that are being, the pediatric office is down on Caroline Street, I think that's what it is, all that is being, going to be moved up to here. So that's a lot more traffic.
We have not, we have not had any discussions at all with the institution about that. So whatever they're doing is very, must be very, very preliminary. But, and that would, is not uncovered, is not covered under the campus transformation plan, so it would require a separate EIR and traffic studies.
Oh, also I'd like to point out that the new car wash is open, the express car wash. I've been through it multiple times myself. They have good packages for unlimited, so I'm getting my money's worth. So we now have two car washes in Loma Linda. There's one down at Redlands, too.
Were, were you the only car that was washing during that rainstorm?
Yeah, probably. I was mad they weren't open during the rain. I wanted to get it washed every day and get my money's worth. Multi-car discounts. It's really good car wash. You don't have to go to Redlands, so, oh.
It's got a hand wash though, no?
I, I had my car washed there today. Yeah, it's nice. And I referred them to the Chamber of Commerce. They're having a grand opening next Monday or a week from, it's next Monday, and they didn't include, they didn't include your big scissors and the red. The red, you know, tape. It's red tape. We're in government.
On a different topic, I guess we're just freewheeling here.
Yeah, I, I closed the, Milford, you came. We've actually closed all the.
We were waiting for.
We've adjourned all the meetings and we're still here.
Is there any way we could get?
Love this place. I had some people, family visiting and they went for a walk between my, where my development is and the development just to the east of it, there's that walkway that goes. And they said it was dog poop heaven. I mean, the whole thing was just littered with dog poop up and down the sidewalk. Wonder if we could get some more trolls in there to clean it up? Another thing is, I see other communities, and I understand that they're probably homeowners associations or something, but other communities I've seen, they have these, you know, dog poop things.
We do.
Maybe one that I've seen in Loma Linda.
We, no, we do.
Some more of those.
Sure.
In Redlands, I've seen places like by every mailbox, they have some dog poop.
Sure.
Things in a little trash can and all that.
We, we just plan more, more ground cover in that area.
Are these homeless dogs?
Yeah, they're homeless dogs.
Oh, okay. Maybe they should do that in LA.
There's a lot of dirty needles and things there, too.
And we stayed?